The Form A applications.
Okay, the first one you have is for 310 Bedford Street.
310 Bedford Street, you're having fun, aren't you?
Are you the engineer?
I'm the owner.
You're the owner.
My, uh, I'm supposed to have Mackenzie Engineering, you're supposed to be the meeting.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, fabulous.
Yeah, so.
So, one quick second before anything else can be.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I can speak briefly to it as you look into, um, essentially we're just creating two lots out of one here. Um, there's a cell tower in the rear of the lot that essentially the operator wanted to have its own property to access it. Both lots are compliant with, uh, the Abingtons' own bylaw. And frontage, lot area, they meet it all. Um, that's really the gist of it. There was a little confusion on the filing. Um, we submitted a second plan. It was just a script that said, uh, all the bearings and distances. So, that's been resolved. I don't know if you.
They, they didn't see the previous plan, they only see them tonight, yeah.
Okay, so I think it should be okay then. Um, that's really the extent of it. It will be a curb permit, this is on Route 18 Bedford Street, so there will be a DOT access permit that's required as part of this, but in a new driveway going in here. I, I'm not sure, I think today they access it through the parking lot and factory. So, um, we are showing new, a new access to the rear side. I can turn it over.
Well, yeah, well, basically, I wanted to sell the property as a whole with the antenna, but they, they couldn't come to terms with that, so I'm gonna stick with the antenna for now. And that, that's why we're just, uh, so if you sell them that piece of property, but you still, you can kind of come along, you know? You'll be able to service the antenna, so.
Yeah, he needs to go, yeah.
Ah, sure. Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
There are millions of watchers wanna be able to hear you at home.
Yes.
Sure.
It's gonna be famous after.
Yeah, without, any questions or? We've looked in all through this at another hearing that we had, so I think most of the board members are familiar with it. Do board members have any questions?
I think we've covered this very thoroughly.
So, a motion be in order?
Motion.
Second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor of the Form A say aye. Aye, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll sign these plans later on and you can pick them up.
Is that, is that all right with you guys to come and pick them up later?
Yeah, that's fine, that's no problem.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Can you pass me that mylar? Thank you. Thank you.
You have another one on 75 Dale.
So, um, does anybody here from 75 Dale? Their engineer emailed me today saying that they would have to continue because they're not through with conservation yet, and I asked him to send me a letter to that effect, and I didn't get one. I mean, I, I do have it in writing in my email from him.
It's gonna say you got it.
I didn't get a letter, but I do have him saying, yes, it's okay.
So, we're gonna postpone it to next month?
We'll postpone it to next month at the request of the developer.
So, that was Bruce.
Bob, second.
Further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? The animals.
You have one more that came in on Thursday?
Okay.
I'll take that mylar if you could. Sustained. Thank you.
More to munchie, yeah. Yeah, this is fun. This is. He's laying. One minute.
Yeah.
Is there somebody here?
There's nobody here, right, for 267 North Quincy Street?
Um, well, just, I would suggest until we get a status update on the legal situation of this property that we don't approve anything.
Legal status?
This is the one the town's suing over, the mess up there. There's an active case in Brockton District Court about this.
Oh, is this the big one that goes all the way in the woods?
Uh. Pretty sure, isn't it?
It's hard to tell where this looks, man. Can you speak up a little bit more?
Isn't that one, Sean?
Sean Riley, Fire Department, Washington Street. I don't represent the applicant or the owner of the property, but I'm familiar with this plan. I haven't actually seen the plan, but I, I've talked to the local avenue business owner who's trying to buy this parcel that's being cut off in this Form A plan so he can keep his avenue business in Abington. One of the things to Mr. Collins' concern, he wanted to buy the land so he'd have complete control over it, and that the owner of the problem would have no ownership of this lot any further. That's the purpose of this, is so that, um, I don't wanna delude you, I mean, is there a name of this? Yes, okay. The applicant's name is Brian Needle. Needle Landscaping is trying to relocate and build here, uh, put their, their, uh, business up here, and they wanted to cut off this parcel and buy it outright. So, in that regard, I would hope you would support Mr. Needle, he's been a longtime Avenue resident and Abington business. Thanks. I don't represent him.
Hi, folks, John Nato, your Fire Chief. I have no idea what's in front of you. The question that came up is the property of 267 North Quincy Street currently in litigation with the town of Abington, that is correct. We are hoping that we'll have a final positive resolution to this on Tuesday, but for right now, that is still affecting the entire property, if that helps.
We should probably do this next month. What's, what's the litigation based on?
I'd rather not comment on that because it's on litigation, but it does affect the entire property.
However, regarding, there's nothing really in our bylaws that say they have to take any consideration. We're all, we're only separating two pieces of property, they're not changing or turning any of them.
These requirements for, you know, frontage.
Whatever it is.
Whether you sign it or not, it's still gonna be based on litigation.
But this got presented today?
Yeah. It got dropped off on Thursday, I picked it up today.
Yeah, what we get? You have to reply to this within, how many days?
Um, one copy is date stamped. September 3rd. You, what, 60 days?
So, our next meeting will be the 4th.
October 4th. You would have plenty of time. It's 60 days, right?
Twenty.
Forty?
Twenty.
Twenty.
That's why we haven't bring it to the.
Yeah.
We could act on it tonight, then.
So, you're gonna deny it or approve it?
I, I, I wonder whether it would be within our right to deny it, but I don't know what the, I mean.
Basically, all we're saying is it doesn't need, have to come before the subdivision laws and regulations, it's just the rules are not required.
David says it meets all the things, so we can approve it.
I mean, if you want.
Just saying that, yeah, it's two lots.
Not approve it, you make, you make your determination that it's not subject to some stretch.
But who owns the property now?
That was my next question.
I think the people, the people who owned it previously to my.
So, how can we approve an ARNR for somebody who doesn't own the property?
It's, it says it's owned by Pro Realty Trust, who, that?
They did sign the application.
Pro Realty Trusted?
I can't read the application, but the application was signed, I'll pass it down.
The applicant is Brian Needle.
No, the owner, I'm sorry, the owner signed the application, the owner is not Brian Needle.
Okay, so the owner is Pro Realty Trust?
That's what it says here now.
Yes.
The applicant is Needle.
The applicant paid for the plan to be drafted, that's why his name's on the plan. That's all. And when he's not buying it tomorrow, and this does not, as the Fire Chief alluded to, does not change or affect the town's existing litigation against the property. This is just a Form A plan that does not require approval.
I don't know that for sure.
Well, if it complies with frontage and, you know, has lot size, then it complies, and to deny it would be illegal, but I don't represent him.
I mean, if you guys want whatever action you take, I can bring it up with the town manager tomorrow, or reach out to council, town council tomorrow.
I think the thing here is we've got 20 days to act on this.
Yep.
And we don't have to approve it, it just has to.
We, we need to have another meeting if we wanna do anything within the 20 days.
Yeah. You're literally a day off.
So, we have to.
Well, 10 days off.
We'd have to have a meeting between this one and the next one to act on it. I'd say if it meets the requirements that presented in front of us as far as frontage and everything else goes, I think we should act on it tonight.
Why, why, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
Yeah, just act.
Well, so that's a motion.
That's a motion.
All right. Is it seconded?
A seconded.
Open for discussion.
There's an active court case involving very, very serious problems on this site, and I know that's not Mr. Needle's problem, and he's been cleared of any of the issues up there, but there are serious, serious issues, and I don't know what the status of these cases are, what's gonna happen next. I'm very uncomfortable doing anything up there until I know what the legal situation is. So, I'd be voting no. This is not something that they have to do now. I mean, it's different lots, isn't it, existing? I don't know why we have to do this now.
Well, you need, if you don't do it within 20 days, by default, they get it.
But I'm saying that they, they've chosen the timing to do this.
That's correct.
Knowing that there's an active legal case. So, uh, that's my stance. I'm not approving anything up there until I know what's going on.
I, you know, I hear Rick, I'm just saying that if we don't approve it in 20 days, it gets approved by default. And if you wanna have another meeting to discuss this after the case is discussed, what, next week, next Tuesday, the chief has said, so.
If we deny it, is the only reason they can't come back in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
It's.
You, you need, you need to either approve or deny the plan. If you, if you, if you do neither, it gets approved.
So, I was asking, if we deny it, are they able to come back in 90 days? Or do they have to wait two?
I, I think you have to have a reason for denial.
Which the reason isn't particularly that for Form As.
No, I'm not voting for it.
So, your motion was approved or not required? Yes. Based on what we've got in front of us.
Any further discussion? On the motion to approve the plan as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Unapproved. Motion carried.
Thank you. Yeah, yep.
Request of Tony Riley, in formal discussion, not a fluctuation, 500 Chestnut Street Site Plan. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Riley, Fire Department, Washington Street, representing Mr. Peter Fiore, who's behind me, waiting patiently in the corner with CRF Land Development. I know you guys have a busy schedule tonight, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. I think you're all familiar with the property, 500 Chestnut Street. It's undergoing construction right now, a lot of bedrock and rock are there. And Mr. Fiore, in, in basically as he's working through his site plan, noticed a couple of things that he would like to change to make it kind of more aesthetic and a little safer. And I delivered a letter to your offices and made copies of the plan that showed the current layout and what he's proposing. And what we're just trying to do is get any sort of initial feedback you'd like to offer to us before he spends $10,000 on engineering fees. We will be coming back to you with an engineered plan, but we thought that what Peter is suggesting, eliminating the driveway going through a live parking area, and then combining two buildings into one, were both improvements, both again, safety and aesthetics. And we're just looking to see if the board had any comments or Peter to take to his engineer before he moves forward.
I like the idea.
You like the idea of what?
I like the idea of improving the aesthetics of the project, because, you know, one thing we got feedback was that people were concerned about the aesthetics, anything that would improve that.
Right.
It seemed to be a good thing.
And even though the majority of this project's not viewable from Chestnut Street, Peter's concerned with the people who are on-site driving, either occupying the site or visiting the site, it will just be more attractive if we make these tweaks.
Yeah, I don't have any objection to it. I think, it, it's, you're lucky to be able to do that, because it is so many of these big sites like this where the parking area is the driveway, it's unavoidable. So, in fact, you get a chance to change it, you're lucky you got all that land.
I'd rather than change it now and get into it, yeah, and have to come back to us.
It's easier with pencils and erasers.
Exactly.
Um, is there any change in the square footage of things in terms of permeable surfaces or impermeable surfaces, or runoff, or, I mean, basically is the layout and footprints of all the roads and asphalt areas gonna be the same, or is there?
All within the same general framework, that's where our engineer would then go through all of that. We're gonna have to update and tweak the drainage because we're moving pavement, catch basins will move, pipes will move. But if you, if you see the before and after proposals, the quick answer to that, Rick, is no. It would be either above the same or slightly less, most likely.
It's gonna be slightly less.
If you don't hear that, Mr. Fiore said he fixed it, slightly less. Sorry, that approved.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed, I'm just trying to understand before we get too far. So, um, when you take that left and run across the front of it instead, and connect to the other buildings on the left-hand side, um, are you running close to the wetland area there, is that gonna require additional conservation approval, or are you far enough, or?
No, will you, um.
It's not very similar to before, that area, there was a roadway down in that area, that was kind of a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
So, we're just going by it, and instead of going between the buildings, that whole back area was all paved, and there were loading docks back there, and I just thought, looking up at the loading docks would be, uh, is, like, great to look at. So, now we're just gonna make that building, instead of two buildings, we'll combine it to one. That's the same size.
Do we have the, yeah, we'll be same square footage?
Same square footage, yep, yep.
Well, we took the load, loading docks and put it on the opposite side, so you can't see them. That's basically the aesthetic part of it.
Yeah, my, my two concerns would be whether there's an increase in impermeable surfaces, if that infects stormwater. And then also just to make sure that the roadways are aligned so that trucks, fire trucks, ambulances, delivery trucks can still make all the turns, which I'm sure is a concern of yours too, but.
Yep, with, uh.
Just to make sure.
Not to shame my engineering friends, but we just didn't wanna spend the $10,000 doing that, only to have the comments come in later. So, this is very helpful, and all of those things will be taken into effect, and we'll submit a full set of copies of, you know, when I meant it, cycling to you in the coming weeks, we'll go over all that. So, thank you for your comments and your time.
Is there anybody in the public that came in to speak on that project? Anything further?
Thank you.
I should've said the 6 o'clock public hearing site plan review and special permit all residential use in the TOD 222 Center Avenue, applicant has requested to withdraw the project. Kinda accept this as a request to withdraw the application of 222 Central, Center Avenue for a special permit for all residence use of the TOD district and site plan review. At this time, we have decided rethink going forward with the application. I would appreciate that any funds not used for consultant review of the application be refunded and payable to Mr. Toledo and so forth address. Thank you for your time and consideration, so.
So, I'll need a vote for you guys.
We can have a vote to accept the, the letter, resend it, and return any funds not used. Motion a, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, so moved. And 6:05 Site Plan Review, 380 Brockton Avenue, and it's a letter on that.
There was, there was no hit publicary notice for that, no?
Okay, so we don't have to do anything?
Nope, just the site plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you go forward, I have the record to know that it's not a 20-day, it's a 21.
Right, I thought 21. The, uh. Now I have a, uh.
Yep. It might be at the bottom of your pile.
Yeah, it probably is. If, if there's anyone here for 207 Bedford Street, it's later on the agenda, and I don't want you sitting around here waiting for us to get to it, because we will not be discussing it tonight. So, if there's anyone here for 207 Bedford Street, there's nothing going on on that this evening.
They're requesting a continuance.
And they requested a continuance.
You have a question?
Yes.
Is it, is there a, a continuance for June?
They do.
They did, so we get another continuance?
Yes, I can.
Well, until the board loses patience, and then they basically, they know. But, yeah.
Um, if you wanna email me, I'll be happy to let you know, 'cause I usually know the Thursday before if they're able to attend or not, so I would save you some time, but feel free to call or email me, and I can let you know.
The Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing at Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenowich Way, Abington, Mass. 02351 on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at 6:20 p.m. on the application.
No, there, there's no hearing notice for them.
Oh, there isn't?
No, this is for the next one. That's for the marijuana one. You just wanna get right into the marijuana.
That's what I thought I was talking about. I got another one before that.
Yeah, it's 380 Brockton Ave.
Oh, I thought that, I thought that was post Form A.
Nope.
Oh, so they still wanna discuss.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. I got that all mixed up. All right, 380, great.
So, yeah, I'm Austin Chartier with Mackenzie Engineering. We prepared the site plan for, on behalf of the applicant, Brockton Ave Realty Trust. We just received comments back from Norwood Engineering, they did the peer review. We haven't had a chance to address the comments yet, but we figured we'd come in and present and just get, be familiar with the project, and maybe, we, we are on with zoning on Thursday and conservation next week, I believe. So, I think after the round of presentations, we'll probably have a revised plan, addressing the comments and the peer review. But, so just a quick overview, they're, they're proposing to build a, a four-unit residential building. It's gonna be two bedrooms each, so that per the zoning bylaw that requires 10 parking spaces, which they're providing. The site is, it's about a half an acre, and there's some wetlands in the rear. They were flagged by Grad Homes of Environmental Consulting and Restoration back in May, I believe. The lot's currently undeveloped, and it sits in the Highway Commercial District. So, for residential use in the Highway Commercial District, it requires a special permit for zoning, so that's why we're going to zoning on Thursday. But as, so the site plan itself does meet all the requirements of the zoning bylaw in terms of parking, site coverage. The stormwater system was designed in full compliance with Mass D E P Storm Water Management Regulations, and the site, it does sit on Route 123 Brockton Ave, so that does require Mastodot access permits for utility and access. So, we're providing a 30-foot RADI, RADIi entrance, which is typical for Mastodot standard curb cuts, and that's really the gist of it. So, we just wanted to open it up for comments and questions from the planning board.
All right, just one quick thing, you need to find something else other than the pyrus on the tree we don't allow them in Abington.
Okay. Yep, sure.
Are we talking about the font that this is printed in?
Yes.
That's the Bedford.
It's unreadable. I don't know what this, any of this says.
Well, wait, um, we reviewed the plans, and I'll try to focus on the, on our critical ones. But in general, the plans are complete, and we're well prepared, but there's a number of items and additional information needs to be provided on. As I mentioned, this does require ZBA approval for residential use in Highway Commercial Zone. In terms of parking and circulation, there aren't any significant items that I've identified. It's primarily providing additional details on where the entrance to the building is, providing a connection once a determination is made as to the entrance, a sidewalk to Brockton Ave is possible, and updating a couple of details on the detail sheet. In terms of traffic, in our opinion, there's no issue there. Sightlines appear to be adequate. Obviously, the withbraded construction of Brockton Ave is adequate to accommodate this number of units. And in our opinion, traffic study, study is no longer tantamount for two bedrooms in this location. Probably the biggest con, or the most important comments that we have are, the wetlands consultant in his report identified that there may be a stormwater basin on the property. If you look at the site plan, existing topography, that would be, Chief C T, David. On the left side of the, of the site, you can see, yeah, line of basin there, that appears that it's being directed to the wetland in the rear of the site. When we were not sure what the function is of that basin, whether or not it was originally a basin that took drainage from Brockton Avenue, that may have been abandoned when ocean drainage work was installed in Brockton Avenue. What's significant about it is the wetlands consultant identified it, but he did not delineate it. delineate it. The Conservation Commission is going to need to make a determination or the wetland scientist is going to have to come back and determine if that is in fact a wetland and the commission will have to determine what's going to happen with that because they are proposing to fill it.
To fill which part?
Pardon me?
Which part?
To fill the area that the wetlands consultant identified as a potential or an existing stormwater detention basin.
Where is that on the map? Sorry.
It's in the left side of the property.
Okay.
You see the concentric circles with the contour inside it indicating the water is heading in that direction?
Yep.
So it looks like they, they are filling it and they need to determine whether or not the Wetlands Protection Act is applicable to doing that with this basin. The other item that is also related to filling of the basin is design collects runoff. There's an issue with the stormwater design calculations and the layout. Question that we raise is the discharge, the flat end section discharge for the stormwater system is now directed to, toward the abutting property in the wetland on that abutting property where the stormwater in existing condition appears to be directed to the wetland on the subject property. So our comment was if they are going to fill that under an order of conditions, move forward with filling it, the stormwater should be collected and directed toward the wetland on their own property where it currently goes, not redirecting it onto an abutting property.
Just a little history on that basin as far as I am aware. This very similar project was permitted back in 2005 and that basin, there was an order of conditions issued by Abington Conservation. They did start some of the earthwork for the project, but it turned, at some point it became uneconomical for them and they basically stopped building. It was going to be residential units. The parking area was just going to be a little more to the right and it was going to outlet into that basin. So the basin is partially constructed. It was after 1996, so it's technically not a jurisdictional wetland per MAST DEP. But so basically it was a similar system, but they were just going to do a surface basin rather than the subsurface because now we're providing a little additional parking for the units. So we couldn't accommodate that on the site. We did look at trying to kind of reutilize some of it, but it just wasn't, didn't work on the site because it's pretty tight. But that's the history that I'm aware of and we will, with conservation, we will get into that with everything, so.
So really, I have no problem with the filling it if conservation allows them to fill it. If they don't, it's going to impact the layout of the site because they're needing that area to construct their parking lot. So it's really up to the commission as to whether or not they're going to allow that to be filled.
Dave, a question for you. On sheet one here.
Yep.
There's the dashed line up at the top that says limit of bordering vegetated wetland.
Correct.
And just to make sure I understand, that's not the buffer, that's the actual wetland that's outlined there.
Correct. The entire site is in the buffer.
I was going to say the entire site's in the wetland buffer.
Yes.
Okay. And a couple spots of this building would be five feet from the wetland line?
Something like that, very close.
Okay. But that's usually not something that's in our jurisdiction.
That's correct.
All right. So a quick question. Is this a paver's out in the back or?
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that is a, yeah, it's a paver patio. It's a newer addition to the plan. There was some comments on the grading about that. So that is something that we will address with more detail, what, how that's going to work with grading in the rear of the site there.
Yeah, because the grading says you're dropping off three feet.
Right. So that was a newer addition to the plan and so we will have to address that.
Yeah, our comment was there are retaining walls proposed on the left side and the right side of the building and in between where this is shown, it was a three-to-one grade right out the back door. So you stepped out down and it was three-to-one down to the wetland. And we suggested that they evaluate connecting the two retaining walls so that the entire back of the site is a retaining wall, which would allow them to do what they're proposing to bring the grade up level.
Uh, yeah, because otherwise some of these pavers are literally going to be in the wetland. So that's a problem.
Or right up to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's not something I could do in my yard. I couldn't go build something right up to a wetland, so that's a problem.
So moving on to other issues, that's really, that's really the gist of it, under grading. We made the comment that we just talked about the three-to-one slope being raised to give residents some outdoor space, usable outdoor space, or as I say. And the final comment that affects the layout of the site is that if you look at the proposed conditions, the sidewalk in front of the building is right up to the building. There's no provision for ability to have any landscaping in the front of that building. So you would have pavement, sidewalk, and building. Our suggestion was possibly, subject to the board's concurrence, would be to look at eliminating the concrete sidewalk and replacing it with landscaping. Given the size of the building, and this is where it would be interesting to know where the entrances are to the building, that given the location, the parking, and the size of this project, most people probably wouldn't end up using the sidewalk. And it would be, I think, a more attractive project if that was landscaped rather than concrete walk. That's what I was going to ask about because I saw the comment, number three, a concrete curved landscape area would be preferable to the sidewalk.
There's going to be a walkway in front of those doors that's nine feet wide by six feet deep, maybe, at two locations.
What was your comment, Jim?
No, I was just mentioning, the concrete would be there. Their first four plans show the doors clustered in the front of the buildings on the left and the right side and it shows a nine-foot opening between them. So I assume that that will all be, all be concrete and then come out to the, up to the driveway. So there's, the spaces in between the doors, that can be eliminated. But I guess what I'm saying, either way you look at this, still the entrances are right out onto that driveway. They recessed a couple of feet, but.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to, where we can maximize landscaping there to do that and then where we have the clustered entrances, some type of sidewalk out to the main road. I think those are reasonable and.
Where are the entrances to the building? Do we know yet?
Yeah, so I do have an architecture.
You didn't have a.
Yeah, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so they're on the front of the building.
Rip frame site.
So they're just almost equally spread out, but you could just do, you know, a five-foot wide connecting strip of concrete out to the driveway and plant the rest of it.
This is a slab on grade?
Yes.
Because if there wasn't, it wouldn't leave you any room for stairs.
Red.
Except into the sidewalk. So you're suggesting that you would have a concrete walk into each of these doors and then in between the entrance doors and on the right side and the left side of those doors would be landscaped?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I missed part of it. Is the first floor down on grade or is it up?
Yes, it will be essentially on grade.
With a crawl space under it?
It'll be a little higher than what's there today, but it will be a slab on grade essentially.
So that's really our comments is to see what the Conservation Commission has to say about that basin and see what the zoning board of appeals has to say about the use. Are you on the agenda for the Conservation Commission?
Yes, I believe we're on for the September 14th, but I need to double check that because we had some back and forth and I think we're actually preparing a restoration plan. So whether or not that's done in time, we may have to continue. So I have to double check if we're actually on or if we're continued from that to the next meeting. But the intent is yet to go to them next and then get their input and then kind of provide us another round of plans addressing all the comments, which would address these peer review comments as well.
So I haven't seen no, no reason why they couldn't continue till the next board meeting. They'd have some items resolved by the, by the Conservation Commission and they could incorporate our comments that we made tonight into this.
I doubt you'd be back in a month though. You'd probably be, because by the time you get their comments, make changes and then have to resubmit, you're two months out of way.
Yeah, you're probably right. It'll probably more realistically be more than that. But yeah, we are open to continuing to next hearing and then if we're not prepared, continuing again or?
My, my, my comments on it is right now it shares, part of the driveway for the business to it is on to the property. And so when you put up a barrier along, when you put up the landscaping along the northeast property line that's between them two.
Yeah.
How are you going to separate their asphalt from your property and, you know, and you can have a little island out there. It doesn't say how you're addressing the outside of your property line.
Right. Yeah, so essentially what they're proposing to do is at the property line, you know, once it gets onto their property, they're going to basically saw cut the pavement and then it'll be a grass, a small grass swale. So anything that does come onto their property will just go into that.
Oh, it's a swale? I thought it was a mound.
It's more, it's a grass depression. It's not a mound, it's a depression. So it would hold, you know, whatever. It's not a big area that would get onto it anyway. It's very flat. But so, yeah, the use for it right now is really, it's just an encroachment essentially.
There's some graphics I don't understand on the drawings, but is there a fence proposed along there?
No.
No.
No, there's not a fence proposed. But I'm sure that, especially on that side where it's a restaurant, food place, it's a good idea.
Well, that's, I was looking at, that along 123, it's a wind tunnel and trash just blows and just thinking about the residents, it's filling up in that gully and becoming no man's land that no one touches. But I would look to resolve that a little bit, little bit, define that a bit further, how you're going to separate the two?
Sure.
You may need to put a K-Pod berm in there and keep the water out of your, or, I'm sorry, that's wrong. You want it to be drainage from that property?
It's, yeah, essentially. It's no, we're not treating it as a stormwater basin, but, you know, whatever came on would be conveyed to the rear of the site.
Not that it matters, but is these rental or?
I believe it is to be rental. I can get that answer for you.
So the outside units are going to be a total of 812 square feet over two floors. Basically nine feet wide, 31 feet deep, like some row houses we've seen.
Essential, yeah. Yep.
No, these are row houses. Personally, I would like to see your team go back and work on the architectural drawings a bit. Consider window sills, consider shutters, dormers, something. Otherwise, it's, it can be better.
Okay.
Yeah. The current property owner has done some really nice stuff in this quarter, so maybe use his architect, I don't know. But considering the size of these units, I really would like this building looking at a little bit better. If we're going to allow four 800-square-foot apartments.
Yeah, units.
It's funky, the building elevation's not, but there's a two-foot, wow, okay. I don't want to zoo on it too badly, but it just looks like a first-year student. There's a two-year, there's a two-foot overhang on both sides of the building, but it doesn't show on, so that's an overhang over that sidewalk.
Correct.
It shows the overhang.
Does it on the side elevation? I see it on the front.
No, on the front, yeah. It shows the overhang.
Yeah, we just show it as a dashed line. It doesn't affect drainage or anything like that in any way. But we do show it.
So they show two dimensions, 58-foot foundation dimension and 62-foot overall dimension of the overhang on sheet C1.
We do have two letters, one from the Department of Public Works. The Abington Sewer Department has reviewed your requests for information regarding planning board at hearing scheduled September 7th, 2021 and has the following comments. 380 Brockton Avenue, this proposal located on Assistant Plan 15, Lot 13B is subject to systems development fees that must be paid prior to the building permit sign-off. And a letter from the Abington Water Department, the Abington Rockland Joint Water Works voted at the April meeting to temporarily suspend all water hookups until we complete a study and demand study, supply and demand study, to see what we have for water availability under our MAST DEP withdrawal permit. With that being said, at this time, there is no domestic water available for this project. Joseph appoints superintendent.
Thank you.
One more question. Do we allow eight-foot privacy fences?
Do we what?
Allow eight-foot privacy fences or does that have to go?
I think it's probably a six-foot and we'd probably have to get a change in that.
Okay. So in the back, we have eight-foot listed?
Mm-hmm.
That's not allowed.
Okay.
Are there any comments from the public? So I guess what you'd like to do, you want to continue it until October 4th or you want to go to the next one?
Um, let's go to the October one for now.
We have a motion.
The filing deadline for that is next week.
Okay. November.
On the first?
Yeah, let's do November.
Motion for November.
Motion, May to November 1st.
Quick question. Are they going, are you going to conservation in between as well or just?
So yeah, that, that's the plan is to go to conservation. There's a few outstanding items that we're trying to get addressed before then, so.
He gave us the date.
We have a motion on the floor, is it seconded?
Yes.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
The only thing I just want to mention is you've got, those front entrances have got to be worked out because the architectural shows stairs and there's just, there's just not enough room in front of that building, so.
Right. Yeah, definitely.
That's a slide though, that's. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that Alan still working?
Yeah, he is. He says hello. I mentioned that you did the review. Yeah, he is. He says hello. I mentioned that you did the review. Yeah, I will. Yeah, he's doing good.
The Avington Planning Board will hold a public hearing at Abington Town Hall, five hundred Glen West Way, Abington, Mass. zero two three five one on Tuesday, September seventh, seven, Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one at six twenty P M. On the application of Natural Agricultural Products LLC, eighty-two Bryan Drive, Brockton, Mass. zero two three oh one for site plan approval pursuant to Abington zoning by law one seven five seven seven and a special permit application pursuant to zoning by law one seven five two four point three for a proposed marijuana retail store and manufacturing growing facility located in the marijuana overlay district. The property is owned by Debra Neta LLC, fourteen thirty-seven Bedford Street, Abington, Mass. zero two three five one. The property is located at one four three seven Bedford Street on Assessor's Map, six eight lot twenty. Plans can be viewed at the Town Clerk's Office, Wayne P. Smith, Chairman, advertising the Brockton Enterprise, eight twenty-four twenty-one and eight thirty-one twenty-one.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Jake Creedon, seventy-one Legion Parkway, Brockton. With me is my law associate partner Scott Rubin, who will give the details of the situation. I would like to tell you that we, the couple of us, have been the lawyers for the first three retail approved. Took us a couple of years to get the first up and running, other than the medical one, running in Brockton. Our engineers, Greg Driscoll, uh, all of our engineers have been through the process. They, I think that it will make your job easier in site approving us for special permit. The, the building itself at, at fourteen thirty-seven Bedford Street is a building that fits up well, in my opinion, to this operation, which would be both retail and cultivation. The owner, Gary Leonard, is here with us. Uh, and again, Driscoll Engineering, Jacob Driscoll Engineering has done the plans and just for the comfort of this planning board to know that we've done the first three up and running retail marijuana situations in Brockton. And without tuning our own horn, a little further, Scott and I have worked not only with the CCC to try to get the regulations right because it was uncharted waters for everybody and the city solicitors office at Brockton. I think they listen to us way more than we listen to them. With that, I'd introduce Scott Rubin, again, probably the best expert in marijuana situation in this, without smoking that gun. Oh boy, that's a tough one. There's a tough act to follow. Again, Scott Rubin here on behalf of the applicant for the special permit and, um, site plan approval for this project. Uh, when, when Gary first told me that he was, uh, going to locate at this particular location and I had an opportunity to view it, uh, the other day. It's squarely in your marijuana overlay district, uh, off of Route eighteen. It's set back almost four hundred feet, this building, from Route eighteen. And it really presents an ideal opportunity that Gary's been looking for. The size of the building fits very nicely on this lot for, um, both the cultivation, the, uh, manufacturing and the retail aspect of, uh, of his proposed business. And I think this site, being that far back from the street, will have a very minimal impact, uh, on Route eighteen, um, quite frankly. Certainly the movement on the site, it's almost difficult to see, uh, once a vehicle travels a couple of hundred feet down Route eighteen. It's difficult to see what movement is even being done, uh, out at the location. Uh, Gary did have a formal location in Brockton and this business has been vetted, the individuals and, um, the proposed, uh, management and operation profiles. He had a provisional license already in hand in Brockton. Therefore, uh, this board should be comforted to know that all the individuals have passed all their background checks, all the security, uh, plans and the, um, individuals and the processes that they had presented to the, to the candidate's commission had been approved and they're bringing basically the same team and the same operations, uh, to this location. So I think this board would be, um, comforted to know that they had already achieved that status at that location. Again, being so far back from the ci, uh, from the, the street, it provides, uh, an element of security. Uh, there's a couple of large overhead doors at this location. I'm gonna let Greg actually go through the plans. They did a nice job preparing the floor plans and go over the site specific issues that I'm sure the board may have some questions about. Just gonna give you a little bit of overview. But really, there's not gonna be hardly any work being done other than improvements to the exterior on the ground. There's gonna be some landscaping added to sort of provide a little bit more buffer to the, the neighboring, locate the neighbors business, which is, I, I believe is a dumpster, uh, business right now and to provide some landscaping in the front of the building as well to sort of soften the site a little bit. But there's an expansive amount of excess parking at the location. And again, the overhead doors are gonna provide, uh, vehicles can actually drive into the facility to do, um, the, um, pick up the product to be delivered into the, into the vans that they prepare or they're proposing to use. And so from a security perspective, uh, everything can be actually done inside the operations. And again, the CCC will have approved all the security measures, whether it's cameras, uh, panic buttons, swipe cards. As Gary had showed me that they're using, uh, they're not using swipe cards in there. Actually, they're using, uh, keys, physical keys and a punch pad for each security area within the building that needs to be locked. Those can be, uh, programmed for different, various, uh, employees who have different levels of authority to get throughout the building itself. And so Gary, uh, has done, uh, an extensive, uh, really probably more than any of our clients have extensive amount of research about these types of facilities, how they operate in other areas of the country. Has really tried to develop a plan that really takes the best of, uh, those aspects of those businesses and incorporate it into, uh, into this site. Again, he's already sort of created a little bit of a lobby area and the retail, um, the retail portion of the building is, um, sort of already within the existing footprint already. It looks really wonderful as it's coming along. And again, on this really large site, I think it's almost a hundred and seventy thousand square foot site, this building is taking up about eighteen percent. So it's a relatively large location with a relatively small imprint, um, on this site. I know that the, uh, application provided for a request for two, uh, two waivers. I guess I would suggest that we, there's a stormwater waiver, but I would suggest it really is more of a non-application. I don't believe that, uh, any of the work that's being done, since really none of it is being done outside except for landscaping, really turning some impervious material into landscaping areas would require any, uh, further calculations on, on stormwater. So I'm suggesting that that wouldn't apply. And there is a fifty, a fifty foot buffer strip that's required. That, we're sort of stuck with the building as it exists. The building is sort of, uh, on the edge of the, um, site where there's only about twenty-five foot of, uh, of difference between them and the, uh, the neighbor, which is the, uh, disposal site, the, uh, the dumpster company. And so we really can't do anything about a pre-existing, uh, location for this building. So that, that's one of the waivers we would be, uh, we would be requesting. So, um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Driscoll and he can go through some of the site improvements and site, uh, specific things and then obviously answer any questions that you guys have.
Hi, Greg Driscoll of Jacob Driscoll Engineering here tonight.
Excuse me, before, before we begin, one, I just realized that we're all at kind of a disadvantage. All the plans we have, you can't see anything. You can just see parking spaces. There's no building. It looks like layers were shut off.
Oh.
And so all of, and I just asked them, they got the same thing. So just so we're gonna be able to catch up with you a little bit.
Okay. All right. Shall I proceed? Okay, Greg Driscoll, Jacob Driscoll Engineering here tonight representing Natural Agricultural Products, um, for the proposed marijuana establishments at, uh, fourteen thirty-seven Bedford Street. This is existing site plan right here. This is the survey plan, uh, inset plan showing distances. And, uh, a hundred, this is the five hundred foot inset plan showing there's no other, uh, facilities. Then a hundred, five hundred feet. This is the proposed plan. So the difference between this plan and this plan is that, uh, some of the existing stuff from here on the second sheet is screened back. What we're showing here is the existing building, the outline of the, um, dispensary area for the retail sales. Uh, we're adding parking along here and at the back. The, this use requires multiple, um, HVAC units to control odors and temperature and all that stuff. So this is, that's what's all lined up along here is, uh, HVAC units. Handicap parking here adjacent to the entrance. Dumpster, enclosed dumpster for non-production, uh, for general domestic, I guess you would call, refuse and not the, uh, production refuse from the marijuana use, which would be housed inside the building and controlled, um, disposal. And so there's an existing entrance out to Bedford Street is over thirty feet wide. What we're proposing to do is, uh, so this is a big gravel parking area right here. We're proposing to remove some, um, some of the gravel and the pavement to increase the landscape area on site. And therefore reduce, you know, by reducing impervious area, we're reducing stormwater and we're not really, um, paving or adding any new buildings or anything like that. So that's why we asked for the waiver for stormwater. Uh, so we're adding landscaping along here. A new landscape islands between the building and this open area towards the front and some more landscaping composed along the southerly property line. Uh, these are typical construction details. So we're proposing forty-seven parking spaces and so we're also proposing, uh, for site lighting, there'll be wall pack lights along the outside of the building and have a photometrics plan in the package for that as well. Showing the, the light spread. And these are the plans from the architects. So these are the, for the existing buildings, this is the, um, elevation use. So existing doors, these overhead doors will be infilled. They're not, they're not needed. Sure. These are existing doors, overhead doors that will be removed and infilled. There's, um, on the outside of the building is a species unit right in front of here. This is the roll-up door that the, um, secure van will be pulling into to either deliver or, um, load up products that will be leaving the site or refuse from the, um, marijuana manufacturing processes. This is the floor plans. This right here is showing the retail area. And then there's a mezzanine level and all that other stuff that's going on. I don't think they that's, that's all from the architects. Let's see, I think I covered pretty much everything between myself and Scott.
Are there any interior floor plans with any other applicants who've gotten very detailed interior floor plans?
I know it may not call it out, but I know since I was in the site that there is a specifically dedicated security room always has to be in the front. If you're talking about people entering into the site. So there's always a person at the front that has to be secure before anyone can get into the facility?
We, uh, we, we, we need to have one at a time talking in this room. Sure.
Who was that?
I have Dave, let, uh, contractor, instructor supervisor who are on the site and I have plans drawn up to the architect. As far as what you're asking on the architectural drawings, this is, uh, the existing and this right here is what's being changed. And the rooms are listed, the bathroom, the bathroom, the counter, the kitchen, the vault area. These right here are two row areas and these three are row areas. As far as everything that's needed to be labeled for the CCC, that's all on this.
There is a dedicated, Dave, do you know where the dedicated, um, server closet is? There is a server closet?
Yeah, that, that's listed as, um, uh, right here. It's listed as kitchen and that's a server. That's gonna be the server closet between the two, uh, kitchen rooms.
So there, there is a dedicated area which the CCC does require where the, you know, twenty-four seven, um, video equipment that they house, the, uh, the digital backup for the security system is, is in place and that is where?
That's all in the security room.
Yes, so.
The two offices up the front, this is the security room and this is the main office and this is the counter separating the employees from the customers. Behind the counter is where the bathrooms are, handicap bathroom, uh, two employee bathrooms, the kitchen, which would be the serving area to the the vault is actually in the next room over, which is labeled vault.
And that's where all product will be stored?
That's where all finished product will be stored would be in the vault. The vault is I mean by twenty by ten feet high.
Right, and?
And so the mezzanine, I haven't been in the building, I apologize. The mezzanine's kind of like a little, uh, platform area up top?
It's big.
Up on the second floor, there's a mezzanine area. There's actually an office up there as well. And I think that's where the manufacturing is being done. Up in the mezzanine area. So there's actually gonna be a supervisor. There's an office up in that, up in that section as well. And that's where the, uh, the manufacturing will be done.
You think it will be done or that's where?
No, that's where it will be done.
Okay. And so the other spade? And so the other space, well, so the other space in the building will be the grow areas?
Yes.
Yes, and the grow areas are required for the product to move from seed to, seed to finished product, so, they are...
But there's no other, there's no other structures in there, no other walls, rooms?
No, just what you see here is the dot lines will be the only dividers.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't impact us at all, but is there, how do you get the stu- I don't see an elevator, how do you get stuff up in there?
Just carry it downstairs.
Do you?
There's only, there's only the mezzanine above the retail.
The, the mezzanine is just these three areas here, this is beneath the mezzanine, which is where the vault would be. The mezzanine up top here is roughly 5,800 square feet, or about 2,000 square feet each, these three sections.
So, there's, there's two floors essentially?
Only a portion, portion of the building is mezzanine.
But the, the grow section, that's not mezzanine, that's just full height?
The grow section, I believe, is wide open in the, in the industrial, in the space.
The mezzanine will be for growing as well as the rest of the open building will be for growing as well.
The three sections that are south of the retail space, 1, 2, 3.
Retail is just this one right here.
Correct, the three sections below it though.
Yeah, these three, this is beneath the mezzanine.
All right, so the, what's the difference between a mezzanine and a second floor at this point?
The mezzanine is the second floor, with the walls going around.
So, you're gonna have essentially six floors, not six, but six spaces of growing area?
Uh, there'll actually be five sections, the vault and the loading dock won't be growing, just the first two on the first floor and the three above it. This right here runs up directly above this.
It, it would be a lot helpful if this stuff was labeled on here, to be honest, because otherwise, I don't, I don't know what these spaces are. And the other applicants did very clearly lay out what all the other spaces were. All right, I'm sorry, that's all for now.
And we received a review letter from North Engineering, which wasn't much to it, if you wanna go through that?
Dave, you wanna?
As the, get rid of this. As the applicant representatives indicated, this site is an existing site, there's little or no changes to the site, no exterior changes to the building. Stormwater design, there's reduction in pavement, and no new stormwater is proposed. Utilities, existing utilities are being proposed. However, there is a note indicating the septic system or sewer connection is proposed prior to construction, so I don't know if you want to comment now or later on.
We're tied in last week.
Tied in, okay.
And I was stopped by the owner of the property.
It, it was tied into the sewer system, there was a stub or something that, so you didn't have to dig up this new pavement, there was a stub out to the property or something?
No, it was dug up and repaved, the driveway was repaved, 30 foot easement to the top row, that was gonna be repaved underneath it.
But you didn't have to dig up Route 18, did you?
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm saying, there was a stub kind of, okay.
You didn't dig up 18, there was a stub, yes.
Uh, grading, no grading is proposed, lighting and landscaping, they have submitted plans for that, lighting, planting, and the architecturals. There's a couple of locations where we're suggesting that guardrails should be considered. I think the most significant one is where you enter the site, off the Route 18, on the southerly side of that driveway, there's a culvert underneath the driveway with a relatively deep area of riprap, that there should be a guardrail provided to prevent people from running off the road, either coming in or going out. Probably the most significant comment relates to traffic. We're suggesting that a traffic impact analysis, the scope of which would be up to the planning board, but there were, there was a traffic impact analysis for the other two marijuana facilities on Route 18. Some of the information, or some of the conclusions of those studies could be applicable to this project, in terms, specifically, specifically in terms of what needs to be done during the opening of the facility. Police details, provisions for parking, so forth and so on. Unlike the other projects, this project has an abundance of on-site parking, the other two were kind of smaller, Bud's, I think only had, when I was looking at that last week, I think there's only 14 or 15 parking spaces, and the other one which has not been constructed probably had a few more than that, but it certainly wasn't the number that's been provided here. Several of the parking spaces may be difficult to use in terms of backing out because of the loading dock and the existing ramp, but if they turn out to be not usable, there's still way more than is required, 36 are required and 47 have been provided. So, that's really all of our comments, and we're suggesting that the board consider approval of the site plan, but any recommendations that may develop out of a traffic analysis, if, if they're significant, let the applicant return to the board for action on those recommendations that may come out of that analysis.
And that would be a, that would be a recommended condition if you approve this and the traffic study were done?
Yeah, and since we're dealing really with the site plan, we, we make no comments on security measures or anything in terms of permittinging of a facility, strictly, strictly deal with the site context.
I made a few notes on application of the site plan proposal that you may have. Unfortunately, the page is outnumbered, perhaps you can make some notes today, but on one thing, and, keep that all, does the fire, does the police department have facilities for monitoring alarms, I know at one time they did and they didn't, do you know whether they do now? Do, uh, do you know whether the police stations has facilities for monitoring alarms for the police places? Yeah, I, I know, at one time they did and then they got rid of them all, and that's what was on this, and that.
I want to speak for the police department, that's probably a central station type thing like an AED, which is called, as opposed to having a panel that things just go out. We also got out of that too.
Thank you. So, on theoretically, would we be page 14, the police station alarm monitoring? I think you need to find out exactly from the police department whether they have that ability, or whether that will be done by your alarm company. And the next page would be, would, in this case, that I numbered was 15, you, you mentioned that Johnson Controls were doing the work for the alarm system, but I wondered if they were monitoring it also?
I can tell you that they're required to have, all marijuana places are required to have not only a monitoring system, but a backup monitoring system, so, if Johnson Controls is gonna do the main, they'll have to subcontract a backup system.
And, and 16 mentions the backup monitor, but didn't say who it was. On page 17, uh...
Same company.
Same.
Johnson Controls.
Well, there's gonna be a backup, which would be someone different.
It's a subsidiary of Johnson Controls.
Or do both?
Yes.
But their backup will be with Johnson Controls at another station or something?
Exactly.
And then, quite often, I, I think on page 17, on this application, you refer to the city of Brockton, and it should be changed to the town of Abington?
Page 18, sir.
That's on, if you, if you have a number of this, you'll find it on number 17, page 17. And then on page 19...
Gary would like to address the...
You, you can, although you, I mean, I'm, we're probably not gonna have a decision tonight, I, I wouldn't think that you could, rather than have you do it all, you can, but I, I, I think it'd be nice to have it spelled out in an application that we have, as, as compared to the city of Brockton, and for us to approve it and say, hey, well, it didn't...
Because my traditional licenses are still, in order for me to transfer my licenses from Brockton to Abington, I had to remove my licenses, and therefore the CCC required me to put Brockton and everything until the transfer is done, in order for me to get the transfer, I had to go through this site.
Okay. On 19, I did this a week or so ago, it was to do with almond car service, you could probably look it over cash, but, I don't know what my notes were on, something to do with between that and, and your bank, it brings some sort of someplace. On 20, you mentioned earlier, Mr. Ruben, that the waiver on 20, on the stormwater and and also the buffer that you mentioned. 22 again was Brockton, not Abington, and 23, it was no, no retail, but there is retail. 28 again, Brockton to Abington, and also the address, and you've explained that, I understand, that it's, you know, it's Brian Drive and Spock Street as mentioned. And I made a note to something to do with the lease agreement on page 35. I think that's basically what I had. Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes. Have we heard from fire and police on this?
We have not heard from police, the fire chief is here.
Are you interested in what the fire chief has to say?
I have just a couple of questions, when you mentioned kitchen, one of the things here, is that a kitchen like you're going to be creating product, or is that a break room for your employees?
It was an old kitchen that was existing, it had a stove in it, we're just gonna take and use it for storage to pass product from that area to behind the counter.
Okay, so you're not gonna manufacture, we, we toured...
No, that will be the manufacturing kitchen, the manufacturing area will be on the second floor.
You're talking the down, you're talking the downstairs?
Is there a manufacturing kitchen in the building?
This is a question?
Yes, there will be, there is a tower.
Okay.
That'll be part of the building.
On, the, the main thing I have is on the one page titled emergency action plans, and you pack it, it's not numbered, it just literally says emergency action plans, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but there is, it says that the fire pull stations will be installed at all entrances and exits, as well as kitchen area and storage room. This needs to be the full code, not just adding pull stations where you feel they need to be. And the last sentence is really the critical one, approve all existing fire suppression systems, alarms, exit signs, and battery backup. As this building is now existing, that may not be a final reflection on what this occupancy is once this is all built out. Again, this is gonna have to be the full fire code, not just how it is right now because you're, you're looking to change things. Specifically, and, and I couldn't tell from the, the plans either, are you adding mezzanine space to this?
No.
Okay. The, myself, my fire prevention team, the building department, and the town manager of Abington toured one of the larger facilities in Brockton a month ago, the one on West Chestnut Street, which was very educational, they, they really, I think, I don't know if you're familiar, affiliated with that one or not, that one really set the standard, which I, I think we're gonna continue, because Brockton Fire is much larger than we are, so they have more personnel to respond with a similar occupancy. I'm not sure what you have in mind for the grow tables, if in fact you're gonna have grow tables. Okay, so, what I'm getting at is, the way this particularly facility in Brockton, they have massive tables that are on rollers, and they roll them so that they can basically go in between the tables to get to the plants, to irrigate them, or whatever they're gonna do. So, basically what they've done is, within each level of, within each grow room, they've added a whole second layer, so Brockton Fire, or the city of Brockton, required them to add a sprinkler system below those tables, because, if, if you can imagine, that's gonna act as a, as a roof, and it's gonna shed all of the, the sprinkler water from getting any fire, if anything's collected or stored, which is nobody's intent, however, you know, should that happen. So, my question is, are you gonna have a similar type of operation with those massive tables?
No.
Okay.
They'll be set four inches off the floor on rolling pads, so there'll be nothing underneath them, no lights underneath, or no nothing.
Okay.
If there was lighting beneath them, then there would be a sprinkler system above
Correct, okay.
There'd be nothing, it would just be on pads right on the floor, the ceilings are all 12 feet high, and the mezzanine's, we can run two levels.
That was my main question with this, I just wanna, you know, where it said we're gonna maintain the existing, however, if you're gonna change the overall structure and occupancy, even if you're not changing the structure itself, if, just by adding some of this, you know, this equipment, that could, in effect, add a whole second floor to it.
Yeah, I've been over there in good health, and it was all explained to me how it is, and we fit under, so we won't be getting sprinklers. Once in the future, if we do put mezzanine on the others, part of the building, sprinklers will be installed in.
That's something you're gonna wanna consider sooner, because, from what we're learning, these tend to grow rapidly, you know, initially you start here and the business is great and they grow, so I just wanna make sure that your existing sprinkler riser system would be able to handle that much of a fire load, just, just to keep that in mind. Obviously, we'll work with you throughout this process, I have no major objections, but, you know, the, the existing thing, that's, that, I wouldn't use that, I'd probably add something that the, the building, the final occupancy before it's signed off is gonna be up to full fire code.
Yes.
Not just existing how it is now. As for the security like that, I'm not actually overly concerned with that, we have a small one in town now, we've changed our response with, with how we deal with that, to keep that in mind, and I defer to the police with all that, so, does that answer your question?
Are there currently, or will there be sprinklers in between the first and second floors as well?
Currently, I believe there are on both. It's been a while since I've been in the building, but I believe that there was.
Okay.
I just had a question, chief, well, this could be, how old is this building, how current is this building, as far as electrics?
We, um, we, we know this, this building had a history with us, we brought this back up to full compliance about two years ago.
So, it's in full compliance?
It should be.
Yeah. Do we know how old this building, I'm just curious, how, do we know how old this?
Early 80s? 60 year? 60 year?
60, 80, it's like old.
It's a metal building, I don't know, so, again, this is asking the chief, longevity in metal buildings, what do you think?
I'm not an architect, it, you know, it's, the metal, the, the building's metal, that may not burn, but the thing's in it will, so...
I was just asking your professional opinion as far as fire safety of a metal building?
I'm not concerned with it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Just as another comfort level, we, in the Brockton situations, with Deputy Williams, who I'm sure you, and his team, the building inspector, walk through us and tell us, we must be in full code, so, again, we have the best engineers that have been through the whole system, we know what is required, and we will do it.
1200 West Chestnut, I used to work at 1200 Chestnut Street, it was a heel factory.
We have a, uh...
Yeah, yeah, now it's something else.
We have a letter from the Abington Department of Public Works.
Mr. Chairman?
Abington Sewer Department has reviewed your request for information regarding the planning board hearing scheduled for September 7th, 2021, and has the following comments: "This proposal located at Assessors Map 68, Lot 20 appears to have no bearing on the sewer system."
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that up to date considering, it says no bearing, that means it's not contributing to the system, but now it is because it's tied in, so would that be out of date? If it has, if it says it has no bearing, that means it's not going into the system?
I, right the letter, the way it says, I don't know what, I'm gonna answer your question.
But they've since tied into the sewer system, right?
That's the letter we got, that's all I'm reading.
When, when is it dated?
August 23rd, when did you tie in?
Uh, two weeks ago, and it was approved by the town.
Okay.
I do have a couple more questions. Do you want 46 parking spaces, or would you rather have less? Anybody?
Yeah, we can take out two spaces.
I'm just saying, if, if you wanna trade a couple for some more landscaping to make it look pretty, I mean, I'm more than, I think
I'd be more than happy to do that.
If you're over by nine spaces or something.
Absolutely.
Well, there'll be no landscaping on that side of the building. The parking spots are all on an existing black docked area right now. So that landscaping isn't going into the parking lot. That's gonna be on the front side, the back side of, of the property.
Right.
All the parking spots.
All right, and just
For security, that may be safer.
Traffic just circulates around it. Okay. All right. Since this is gonna be doing wholesale, are you delivering the wholesale product or do they come to you and pick it up?
Come and pick it up.
They come and pick it up?
No delivery.
Okay.
Will, uh, the road path will be delivering wholesale product to other dispensaries.
That's my question is, is, are you delivering it to other people or are they coming to pick it up?
No, to other dispensaries.
You're delivering?
Not to our retail.
No, and I'm talking wholesale. Okay.
And we'll deliver to them, yeah.
So you'll have some, will you have vehicles stored?
We'll have, we'll have one delivery van that'll pull right into the building to load up and pull out of the building to deliver.
Okay.
And that van will also have the security and be approved by the CCC as well.
Okay.
With all the recommendations.
Now, I, I assume you're gonna be very successful. So how many times is this gonna be coming in and out a day? I assume only a couple of times a day?
Yeah, maybe two, maybe three.
Okay.
At most.
Okay. The school buses are gonna remain in front of the property or on that front part?
Only for another five years.
Okay.
Then I purchase the building.
Do you have any thoughts of what would happen?
Now, that's unless the landlord makes other arrangements with them. They were supposed to move out this past June, but I guess he renewed their lease.
A couple of questions and a couple of them reflect what the chairman said. Um, please give the, what page is it? The Emergency Action Plan page a very thorough proofread.
Yes.
It says here, talks about water being filtered and reused.
Yes.
So I know, obviously you get a certain amount now, but using more
Once the cultivation center is up, they'll either have a well, but at very first we'll have a water tank delivered, so there will be no town water being used other than the dispensary for the toilets and sink.
So I mean, as an existing building, they get an allowance in the system, I assume. So, but you're not adding to that. You're gonna be trucking it in and
That is correct.
So, uh, obviously plants need water and all that stuff, but, um, how big is the tank? How often does it need to be filled?
Uh, probably be a three thousand gallon tank. It'll probably be filled probably once every two weeks.
Okay. All right. The packet also talks about an exterior fencing going around the property?
Yes, no longer.
No longer?
It would have been a requirement from the CCC if we had glass walls on one side of the building.
Okay, so there's no six-foot fence going around the whole?
No.
Okay. Regarding the, the fog passes, every time that's used, that's logged, right?
Yes.
Anytime a door is open, it's, it's logged somewhere?
There will be, yes. That'd be automatically logging.
All right. You talk about lockdowns, if there's theft discovered?
Mm-hmm.
And it says employees, visitors, or vendors. I don't know if you consider customers, visitors?
They are.
They are. So if a theft is discovered, if you're a customer, you're stuck inside?
Until the police arrive.
All right. There's no time limit? I mean, it's two, three hours it could be or?
Until the police arrive.
This commission rules. So we just use the words that they have.
You'll have to get a babysitter, Rick.
Yeah. No, I hadn't seen that language before. And okay, that's fences as well. Uh, it says establishment, it, it mentions in here a hundred thousand square feet on two point five acres and occupying sixty-five hundred square feet of the building.
That's the previous address I had.
I would just fix it.
And again, I had to do that because I have to do the renewal first, which I've already done. It's been renewed and I'm doing the transfer right at this meeting.
No, that's fine. I'm just I'm just making sure that I wasn't missing something. This one's more nitpicky. Uh, video camera system, it says the film derived from surveillance cameras and there's no film and it's, it's a nitpick, but I think that's about it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to divulge something. Gary and I, excuse me, Mr. Leonard and I had known each other in a professional capacity. Yes, we have worked together many times. We're the planning council. It's good to see you, Bruce. Good to see you, Mr. Leonard, sir. But I just wanted you to know that. There's no financial or anything like that. Gary and I have just known each other for a long time.
Just, just a new question that came up from Rick's question with the security fencing that's not gonna be there because I wasn't sure. If there's no security fencing around this, do you already have plans? Can you push back the vegetation from, I think it's the north and the east side of the building? It's kind of encroaching in the back of that building. Are you guys able to push that back a bit?
On the back, I think it was already taken care of. The back of the building now, it's a drainage pit.
It's been a while, it, it, it's been about a year. Last time I was there, it was maybe two feet.
Four months, two months ago. That was all taken care of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, haven't been on the property, so thank you.
Yeah, it was done with the Route eighteen. They tied that back into the two big culverts. They put on that Route eighteen, so they wanted to get the drains in behind the building.
It was all encroaching right up to the building. It was an issue, actually, it was an issue with the emergency exits.
Yeah, no, right now it's all the way back.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to make any comments? If you could, please give your name and address.
Might need to use the mic. I was trying to find out where the elevator was going up to the mezzanine, so if the handicapped workers could, um, work there. So there's no elevator, but there's gonna be an office and employees. And, um,
Right.
We're not really having a conversation. And then, um, again, as you stated with the pages, um, I believe it's page eighteen that says the safe is gonna be located on the third floor.
Yeah, I, I, I think as explained, uh, a little while ago, uh, by the owner that, uh, that this was for Brockton, so they have to keep it this way to get the renewal and it'll be all changed.
Right. I, I was just talking about this. It says project narrative, fourteen thirty-seven bed fifth grade. So, I mean, how are you gonna be able to review something if you
They're gonna, they're gonna rewrite this for us.
Okay. And then, um, we requested like copies of plans. Did you receive the plans?
Chief?
Talked to the, um,
Town clerk?
Yeah, Ms. Shay.
Planning.
All we got was a really, really, really small plan.
That's what we all got.
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking at.
It's even smaller than yours. But again, if that's gonna be rewritten, we can review that at the next meeting and go from there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Take it up the next time.
You asked a question up front. I forgot what it was. I don't think I answered it. The first question you asked.
Does this have to meet ADA standards and put an elevator?
Yeah, for the second floor.
Yeah, there is no elevator.
Right, for the second floor, how do the employees get out there?
I, I can answer that. It is the, it's tech, no one really does this anymore, but, uh, if it's a private facility, unless you have a handicapped employee, they don't have to put an elevator in. If, if they hired somebody that suddenly was gonna work on a job up on that other floor, they'd have to do the whole thing all the way down to a parking spot. But, uh, it's, it's done very rarely, but I can understand here that, that they might not use it. That's why I was asking about how they move vertically.
Even when they do a major renovation, they don't have to make it ADA compliant?
Now, if it's staying private on the second floor, it's only for public spaces.
Are there any other questions?
I just wanna make sure. Um, I had two people send emails in. I just wanted to make sure you guys received them. I left them in front of you.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you're able to look at them.
I do have one other question?
No.
One other question?
Yes.
So do I understand they've already started construction on the inside?
No.
They've done cosmetic work on the inside. It was a permit taken out. They took a permit out that, uh, there was two windows on the inside of the, uh, two offices, one the security room and one my office. We took a permit out. We just blocked those off and the rest was paint and a lot of heart, sweat, sweat and tears.
Okay, okay. I'm curious. Everybody, is everybody here for this particular project? Oh, no.
I know, nobody commented, so.
I thought the place was filled with, I think, okay.
Well, if you're gonna have another meeting, you could just do that. Supporters.
Do you, you don't wanna continue it till October fourth? I'm sorry, yeah, October fourth.
That's
Um, it's either this brownie or next brownie? I mean, you're just gonna really change that narrative up, right?
Right, that's it.
And make some Yeah. Yeah, so you, Dave, you won't need more than two weeks, right?
No, I don't. I guess the bigger question is, is the board not requiring any type of traffic analysis?
Right.
Uh, which would be more problematic for them to meet that timetable.
Okay.
Or is the board comfortable from what they've seen in other projects that they can use the conditions of approval for most projects to make them applicable to this?
What we learned from the other two projects is that they're not expected to have a significant impact. This would be a bigger operation because you're also growing and cultivating and delivering. But it's also an industrial zoned area. It's Route eighteen. I mean, this, this isn't Amazon moving into the terminal next door. This is a commercial business in a, an existing commercial building that's had plenty of tenants pre- previously. And we've never heard complaints about traffic from the site. So I don't know what else we'd learn by doing a traffic study that we don't already know, as long as site lines are fine.
I think, uh, if we could, uh, not require a traffic study, but, uh, have some kind of a study on the entrance, uh, when they come off the, off Route eighteen, just at the very entrance, the site lines for, for traffic on Route eighteen.
Okay.
And not require to have a traffic study.
Yeah, just more, I, my concern, I think maybe this is yours too, is the speed of cars coming off our new newly widened Route eighteen. Just to make sure all the turning radiuses are sufficient and can handle a car coming around forty-five miles per hour.
We could certainly have our engineers, you know, certainly look at that.
Yeah, that's something that Mass DOT has to do when they, when they do a widening or, or work on the road, they wanna make the go through each and every driveway, make sure that they're all
We asked the same question to a couple of the others as well, so it's, I mean, it's nothing new, but
Do you want it reviewed?
We won't need a traffic study.
We won't need a tra, I'd like to see stops in sight distances, but, you know.
All right, so you're just
Yes, Dave.
Was the entrance to this site constructed by Mass DOT? Is part of the construction, reconstruction, the meeting?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, so it meets the Mass DOT standard? Presumably would be acceptable to Mass DOT.
Yep, correct.
So we don't need to add?
Well, as I indicated, I think Mass DOT constructed the entrance, so there shouldn't be a problem with that. I, I would think that as part of their, um, analysis for construction of Route eighteen, that they would have looked at sidelines. I think if you go out there, I think it's pretty much on the pre-street stretch of Route eighteen. And there should be finalized plans for eighteen available. That's something we've talked about entire history of reconstruction of eighteen as finalized plans. Well, since it's mostly done, there should be finalized plans that show things like that. Certainly the traffic from this facility is substantial to this, and the traffic could be from a, a fully operated warehouse that attract the trailers and, uh, items like that coming in. Who was that in that place? It used to be Johnson and McGill.
That is Johnson and McGill.
Johnson and McGill, yeah. And what did they do?
They do
They sell mulch or something?
No, that, no, that's, that's, yes, that's mulch. That's, that was a separate building and it, you know, since then was changed towards fitness place, so they had all sorts of stuff in there.
Will you be keeping the tank out by the highway?
I believe we will keep the tank out by the highway.
There was a wooden cutout tank that they used to
Oh.
put out by the roadside when it was a, uh, laser, not laser tag. Pink ball, please.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess bad joke.
There is a note on the plan where we, we talked about the, uh, the Mass DOT. Does Route eighteen's got any construction or state highway operation number eighty-three point five? So a reference to the, uh, work that Mass DOT is, is doing. Current address is in performance with Mass DOT standards and modifications are no, no modifications are required. That's, I know the way I had to the plan and we did look at what Masters was doing out there.
I just wanted to make one final comment. I understand that these places consume tremendous amounts of water, right? Now, Mr. Leonard said they're gonna truck in three thousand gallons every couple of weeks and stuff like that. Anyone wanna comment on the actual water consumption of this thing, Jack?
Are they gonna be, I have a provisional license for ten thousand square feet.
So I'll be doing everything gradually. And like I mentioned before, I'll be looking to do a well. Um, just as, just to get the grow-up going. I'll start off at probably twenty-five hundred square feet after three months, another twenty-five hundred square feet. And probably by the end of the year, I'll be up to my ten thousand square foot capacity. Are there, like, industry standards? Could I go on my computer when I get home or my phone and figure out how much water is consumed per square foot in one of these growth facilities, grow facilities? You probably could go on the internet and get that information, yes.
The CCC is, is, uh, certainly involved in the conservation efforts as well?
Because, you know, Abington is on a water moratorium. But you're saying, and I hate to sound like a pain here, uh, as far as proof of a water, have, have you done any research as to feasibility of having a water source and a water source on site? Like I said, my plan is to dig a well. Okay. And that well will be dug within a year. So, um, looking at a temporary source, which would be the water truck. Now, if the water truck needs to be filled prior to the two weeks, of course, I need the water, so I'm gonna call it and have it refilled. I just, I was just touching bases on Just trying to justify the question with an answer.
One gallon per plant per day, and each plant takes roughly nine square feet, and that's in the bud section. The vegetation will be roughly a quarter of a gallon per plant in, in per plant per, every week.
Now, it's good that this was entered into record, but the point is that that's, that's always been a concern in grow facilities as opposed to refacilities.
I've already contacted Census Springs, uh, for a delivery and through Hill Springs. I've gotten prices from both of them and how their deliveries were, and it is feasible for us. But the well is what
The long-term solution.
Is what the solution is.
One more question for Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, um, I'm sorry, not Mr. Johnson, the, uh, the owner, the applicant.
Mr. Leonard.
Mr. Leonard. I apologize.
Call Mr. Johnson, Mr. Leonard.
This is not quite so much to do the application, but just industry in general. Are we seeing, um, prices come down wholesale as this industry starts to build up? I had seen one number about how much a thousand square feet or of product can generate. I'm just curious if we're seeing any of those numbers deflate now?
No, they, they've been, they've been pretty steady around forty-five hundred dollars per a pound. They've been pretty steady now for about six, seven months. The price does fluctuate, but two hundred dollars, maybe up or down, but mostly they've been on the upswing.
Okay. And I've got how much a, a single plant produces, uh, what, what is the
Depends on how good you are.
I'm about the economic development. There's my
It takes anywhere from four ounces to a pound, depending on how long you let it vegetate. Oh, you can leave a plant vegetated for ten years. Once you change the light cycle, it goes into the bud stage. So you can have them in a bud stage, foot and a half off the ground or ten feet off the ground, and that will determine the yield off.
Have you figured out average yield per year out of curiosity? Again, assuming
I'm sure they have.
Again, this is, I'm just curious.
That, that needs, needs to be proprietary, but
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The only way to
Do you wanna write, stock your own company, send your all to college?
What type of fertilizer?
Thinking about all that water you've had.
In order, in order to move the meeting along and, and to, uh, to get the other people we have on the schedule, is anything further to be said from the board? And if not, does someone wanna make a motion to, uh, continue the hearing till October fourth?
Motion made.
A second.
Motion made. Do we have a seconded? Someone wanna second that motion?
He did.
Oh, he did, sorry.
You're very quiet.
Yes.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I've known Mr. Leonard three years economic development. This is a different kind of economic development.
I thank you, John Boyd, thank you.
Yeah, Gary Leonard was the downtown...
Oh, yeah?
Yes. And then he did Spark Street as a grow facility. I don't Gary for one.
Yes.
Yeah, Rick, you know, Gary did build up a solar and plastics plant over there, uh, over there where the pizza place that hired Rockton over there.
Which, which pizza place in Brooklyn?
This is the, this is the big pizza bakery.
Next on the agenda, if, if you're not in for the next meeting, public hearing, Phil Permitz, 67 Oak Street.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to understand my religion to a little bit.
How you doing? Just look at you, you're looking fantastic. Good for being in this booth. Yeah, yeah.
They sent people out?
Okay, that was really weird. I saw there's two letters. I thought it was a, it was here, do a check. Maybe they thought free samples were...
I think it's because it's an industrial, because it's a grow facility. It's an industri- it's an industrial operation. Gary is down, over there in Rockton. On that old brick and saw and plastics plant. I mean, there's two brick and saw and plastics plants that are grow. Toro was Chestnut Street and the other one.
Because I know of Rockton, like a lot of places have huge empty...
The Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at 6:30 PM at Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenowitz Way, Abington, Mass. On application of James McKinnon, 42 Plain Street, Rockland, Mass. For approval to allow fill-in materials to be brought to the site of 67 Oak Street, Abington, Mass. 02351. Pursuant to Abington General Bylaw, Section 49-1, the property is located 67 Oak Street, Abington, Mass. 02351, as shown in the assessment map, 65 Lot 32. The applicant will be, the application will be on file at the town clerk's office during regular business hours advertised in the, I guess it wasn't, we didn't, just Wayne T. Smith, Chairman.
Kyle Gaby, representing James McKinnon on property at 67 Oak Street, which also has frontage on Adams Street. The lot in question contains 2.3 acres, which previously was cut out of a, a piece of property that was owned by Ralph Murphy, who was the owner of Jenkins and Simmons. And I subdivided that lot off in 2004. The area in question is, is a fill area that abuts Sullivan property, which is just located on Adams Street. We've done a topography of this area and this area that is in question, I believe, is less than the 250 yard requirement, cubic yard requirement of the Abington bylaw. And the reason is that there was always a ridge along the Sullivan Kearney and the Murphy property, in which I surveyed back in 2004. There's a stone bound located on the property line of Sullivan and Murphy, and McKinnon. And the elevation of, of that bound is 15821. The fill that was brought in from the Sullivan property, that, and some partially maybe from the Kearney property, was added to the top of the berm that bought the berm up to elevation 162, which is basically a triangular shaped ridge on the top. And it's roughly 125 feet long, and the average depth would have been two, two feet by about 15 feet wide, which comes out to actually 178 cubic yards of material that was brought in. Mr. McKinnon discussed that we're gonna bring in the detail, we're dropping the top of the berm from elevation 162 back to the 158 elevation and sloping with that material, sloping at three to one into Mr. McKinnon's property. That area in the landscaping berm detail will have abovites placed along the top. And it'll be a mulch, a bank mulch with a slope of, I'm sorry, excuse me, it's 2.5 to one. So it's gonna be sloping, if you look at the detail, from elevation 158 to 152 at Sullivan and from 158 to 154 to Mr. McKinnon's property. Jim can confirm that they, you know, they, they did bring material in there, but it's nowhere near. I, I don't know where this figure, somebody said 300 and something yards from a previous meeting, which is totally incorrect. That bound has been there, shown on a 1940 survey. And the bound is at least 80 years old, and it's always been at elevation 15821. I don't, I don't know how everyone's saying that this, this, not everyone, but some people are saying that this was, the whole berm was created, but it certainly wasn't.
Did it used to be the backside of the hill?
Yes, it was a hill.
Yeah, so that was the backside.
Yeah.
Okay. So that great, so it's, it's always gone up?
Yes, yeah.
But just now it just goes down a lot faster?
Yeah. In existing hill, we just love to go up.
But we're gonna flatten that out a little bit by taking from elevation 162 down to 158 and pulling it out onto Paul's site, so it's at two and a half to one versus presently, it's probably at one to one annoying...
But none of this is put on the other edge of it that borders up to the Hallerins or that wooded area? None of it was put there?
No.
Is it gonna be kind of tamped down or...
Yes, it's gonna be tamped down, or we're gonna woodchip it off, put abovites or what's all we have.
Very presentable, yeah. I mean, Jimmy runs a clean operation there. I don't think he's ever had any complaints of anything he's, he's done there. And he, he's always kept the front of the building well maintained. His father even did it before. That is, I mean, that, that's a picture of the berm looking from Jimmy's side, so that's gonna roughly come down like four feet. Like that. I mean, this will be Jimmy's property. This is the present berm, so this area is gonna come down like four feet.
Will they be doing anything to the natural flow of water or anything like that?
Well, there's, there's always been a berm there, so there's not, we're not really...
I mean, what you're telling...
Yeah, that's our main thing. That's, that's all I'm in concern about, is that.
Any other questions from the board?
Did this just, was this part of the, I, I think what everybody was complaining about was the trees removed along Oak Street. Not, and I think it over, I was wondering what...
No, we didn't, we don't, we didn't do that until it was over. Well, we took trees down on Oak Street because I had to get the...
Oh, you took the fence up?
Yeah.
This, this came about during the fill and site plan hearings for 662.
Separated?
Ma'am?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my property, so...
Wait, what, what, everything comes through the chair? Okay.
So, that's, it came up during Mr. Sullivan's hearing.
Okay, alright, so that's why you got...
It was said at that hearing that 500 yards of fill were brought over to Mr. McKinnon's property, so the board asked me to send a letter, which I did, and we're here now.
Yeah, I mean, if you, the previous owner...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold it. I'll, I'll have you come up here with the microphone, and I, if one person could talk at a time, we'll get the record going.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason I'm here for was, it was the reason, the, the fill that was brought in either from the Sullivan property or the Kearney property along that berm, and we find that it's, it's roughly 178 cubic yards. And however, we are going to revise that and make it presentable with the abovites and, and the mulching on the, on the slopes.
Mr. Mayor, you want to say something? Wait, you, please.
Okay, I live at 105 Oak Street, which is across from this fence. I've lived there since 1986. Never, ever had I had a problem with anything over there. And then in 2018, he started mowing all the trees down, which, this is a residential area. That was industrial with trucks, everything. Didn't matter because we had this beautiful set of mature trees. Used to be a nursery over there. There was actually rhododendrons in there and everything. Clear cut everything. So I actually put in a complaint form to the zoning board, which I was told that they're his trees, that he can cut them down. But little did I know that there's supposed to be a buffer zone between residential and industrial or whatever, okay? So now he brought in dirt, which included stumps, which he has now taken and pushed in the back. She lives on Hemlock and backs up to that, so there's another whole section with another big giant berm over there. And he has trucks over there that are leaking, for one thing. And they come at 4 o'clock in the morning and start up. So I get up very early because I have to go to work very early. I let my dogs out and there's clanking and banging and trucks everywhere. It has made a residential area horrible to live in, which never had a problem before all this started. So I don't know whether your father was a really nice guy and he didn't do this, or, or what happened, but something happened between now and then. So now we have this big giant fence. If I go up to my second floor and I look over, I get to see all these trucks. When you're sitting there eating your supper and one of his big trucks comes in and dumps something and the thing slams your whole house. You know, I live in a residential area. I paid money for the house. I've lived there for a long time, and now it's become horrible.
Excuse me, I don't, I don't, I don't dump any, any stuff anymore. I don't do any of that dumping. And as far as 4:30 in the morning, I told them before that they were gonna have us to dump...
4:30 in the morning, nobody's...
There is 4:30 in the morning, please.
There was a dump that come up back, and I told them until 7 o'clock. I told him, hey, come until 7 o'clock. I made that because that was the complaint that you complained about. And I'm, I try to help you as best as I can. Whatever I can do for you, I, I don't mind.
Why didn't you leave the trees there?
Because they were dead. They were gonna kill somebody.
Wait, 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 hold on a second. I'll tell you what, the best thing to do is, as each one of you talk, address it to the chair, and then I'll ask for a question, an answer or something, alright? And so this way, only one talks at a time.
I have pictures of the trees. I don't have them with me because I brought them every single time that we were supposed to have a meeting here and then somebody didn't show up. I have pictures of the trees that were marked. I mean, I went so far as to, you know, I, I tried to make it so that I didn't live in this industrial zone. But now I do. But we did see, I have pictures, I mean, he had a fleet of Volkswagen cars there before.
I did, I did have.
Somebody had to complain because they were leaking into the ground. So we have these trucks over there now that are leaking into the ground, and they fix them over there as well. So I live in a residential area, but I really don't anymore.
Actually, about 205,000 feet from it, right on front.
No.
We don't do any work on that.
One of the time, we, we did a picture in...
Debbie Loans, 105 Oak Street. There was a Saturday when he decided he was gonna spray outside and he sprayed a truck, and all that smell just filled the neighborhood. And you can't do that. You have to be in a contained building in order to spray paint something.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne, I just, we'd like, I mean, this whole property, along with the abutting property, all the way down to Oak Street, all the way down to Hem, Hemlock Lane, is all zoned. The portions of the Moore property on Oak Street, the Kemp property on Oak Street are all zoned industrial. This property was a trucking terminal for years by Jenk, owned by Jenkins and Simmons.
Yeah, I know that.
Like I say, I surveyed up there, that's...
I know that, but the trucks at that time weren't, weren't going back then, I don't believe, when Jenkins and Simmons owned it. But I understand where you're coming from. Is there anything to be done to put a buffer zone up there that would give them a little bit more privacy?
I don't want to do anything.
South of, or Oak Street?
Oh, Oak Street?
That, right? That's what is up at Oak Street.
Yeah, I, can you tell me where your, where your, where your home is on this plan, please?
Is there a fence in?
Yes, there's a fence in. And I have 6,000, 7,000 dollars in...
Where are you on this, where would you be?
She's not on there because she's across the street from the back of his property.
And the complaint was about the fill being here, right? So this is Mr. Sullivan's property?
Yes.
And then the fill got moved over here, so he's done a thing of the whole site. So you must live over here, is my assumption. She's 105...
I live across the street.
So where are the fences?
So you're on the other side of Oak Street?
She lives over there, because Oak Street would run back here. So, right here, so that's Oak Street. The fence would be here somewhere, are you...
And this is where we are.
It's your fence. So the fence that's on Oak Street?
Yeah, that's, that's where the fence is, right on Oak Street.
So it's right, runs right back here?
Yeah, runs up to Jenny's house.
So she would be over here?
Yes, should be across from Jenny Kemp.
So when I look up...
So the Kemp is over here, so she'd be over here somewhere.
Okay, and that's about where she'd be.
Yeah, this, this, this road...
That's alright.
This road continues up here. It's 40 foot layout, 400 feet. As you can see on the assessment.
You're, you're on the other side of the road.
Yes, I am on the other side of Oak Street. But this is what I see, and my house...
But you're up high, we're down low. We can't help. You bought, you bought next to a commercial property. I am gonna put another fence.
Wait a second, what? Go ahead.
I will, I am gonna put, I am gonna put a fence all the way across. I talked to, uh, the...
I don't want any more fences. We just want trees. I want the green back.
Oh, I'm trying to look for trees up here.
Lewis, the discussion that some of the trees were dying and so forth, and I, I know I've seen situations like that.
I can show you pictures of healthy trees with red axes on it.
Well, anyway, there was a couple of the whole power line that were ridiculous, so nobody wanted, I called up the town to have them cut down, and nobody even wanted, I cut the trees down for me. And when you see a tree with black coming out of it, that tells you it's got a disease on the inside. I'm not trying to be an enemy to you at all.
I mean, I'm not trying to be an enemy to you at all, and I, I never, never got to meet you. If I had met you, I would probably would have been at a different level.
Oh, I tried.
Mr. Chairman.
And all the other neighbors up there, they said I was doing such a, a great job, they had no complaint. I've been there for twenty-five years. I've never had a complaint except after Jenny. Jenny, when I cut that tree down, her cactus are buried underneath, and that's when she got mad at me, and she got. The one that passed away, Mrs. Kemp.
With Jean?
Jean, yes. And I did nothing but nice to her, I was very good to these people. So, the only, all the ones to.
No, no, why not the only ones? The other people just don't have time to see you.
Okay, well, if I can help out, I will help you out.
I think, I mean, just, say what you wanted to say, and then I'll.
I live in, I live in one Hemlock Lane, and I got this one.
Can you use the microphone?
And I also want to uphold this one, so, I, because this is actually lower our real estate value, our home value, in the real estate market, and we pay high rate taxes to the Abington, like seventeen percent tax. And actually, this is a whole tract, and everything looks ugly, and actually, this decreases, lower our value, home value. That's the, that's the things concerned with mine.
Which address was that?
One Hemlock.
One Hemlock Lane, Abington, one Hemlock.
So, it's where they.
And we pay, we pay higher rate of taxes.
Just so we, we can go back to what, what this hearing is all about, is, is the fact that they, there was a complaint that they were bringing in more than two hundred and fifty feet of fill. And in, in reality, if, is what Mr. Gavi says, they didn't bring in two hundred and fifty foot, they brought in a hundred and seventy-eight cubic yards, and they used a hundred and eighty-seven, seventy, I'm not quite sure where, let me see.
A hundred and seventy-eight cubic.
A hundred and seventy-eight cubic yards you brought in, and then.
From the abutting property of Sullivan and.
Oh, from the other two of property, and what, what they brought in was, other than that, it was minimal. So, and that's, that's what we're here for tonight. What I would like to do, and, and Mr. McKinnon suggested that he would do it, is for him to get together with both of you and try to work something out. That's not what this hearing is about tonight, it's only about the fill. And, and so, I under.
I have fill, fill questions, so.
Oh, okay, answer that.
The fill that is in the back there was brought in at the same time as the berm fill was, and pushed all up, so that's where her, that's what she's talking about.
But they're saying, but.
That had tree trunks in it, but had everything. It was just dumped, and then pushed over there with a big bulldozer. You can't bury stones.
No, you can't.
Also, that was a wetlands that had, since I've lived there so long, it actually had a stream back there, and it actually had docks in it at one point in time. So, we did call the EPA, and the EPA came down and said it's now pushed down behind, more toward like where basic circle is. So, if we wanted to have a study done, then maybe we could get somewhere. I don't have that kind of money to go get a study done, to see whether he's moved these wetlands in the spring.
I can assure you this much, the EPA is a lot more restricted than what the town of Abington would be, but.
Oh, no, they called right away when.
Yeah, I understand, but I, I'm surprised if, if it was like that, that they didn't do more, but that's, I think, beside the point. At, at this point, I would suggest today that you get together with them and see what they can do for planting material and things like that. If, if that doesn't work out, then, you know, come back before the planning board if you wish, but.
Is it the planning board, or the board is allowed?
You might have to go.
Or where should I go?
Quite frankly, I, I don't know what the whole problem is at this point. It's, it hasn't got a lot to do with planning. This is a fill permit thing to start with, so.
So, is any businesses being run over there?
Yes, there are. There, there are many different.
And they're allowed to, it's an industrially zoned part of town.
Part of the problem is that it is an industrial zone area, so a lot of buffers aren't what you think they are for residential and so forth.
Is there a letter, so, that allows fill material to be brought?
Yeah, this, this is on the fill permit, this is what we sent out, that's, that's from me. And they, they take the post it in as on my letter, on a letter ahead of the planning board.
Can I maybe try to help this out a little bit? So, the only thing tonight that we can talk about and take a vote on is the fill permit for the material that was brought in between the two properties. In regards to the trees, I don't think you're wrong, but that's not something we can do anything about as the planning board if there's a violation of what's included or required in the zoning bylaws, which there might be, there might not be, I don't know at this point. That goes through the building department. Basically, need to file a complaint that there's a violation of zoning.
And what about the extra dirt that was brought in at the same time that the berm was put up? What about all that dirt that's now pushed up and pushed out into the?
You can make the complaint at the same time to the, to the building department. Just, I mean, there's, there's a process in order to do it. We can't, as a planning board, there's just nothing legally that we can say, that we can go investigate. That's just, it's not how it works unfortunately. But if you go to the building department and say, there's supposed to be a vegetative buffer between industrial and residential, they'll look into it.
Yeah, me, that here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not making any judgments or assessments, I'm just saying, this is what the process is, as we've learned from this whole thing with all these properties. So.
But, but I would suggest that, that you, you talk to Mr. McKinnon, I'm sorry to, I cut you off on.
But yeah, if you can work it out civilly between, as neighbors, that's always the best solution, but if that doesn't work out, that's your avenue.
And, and you may or may not be better off by doing that, so I would really suggest that if you can work something out with, with Mr. McKinnon, that would be in your best interest, I think, but that's, you know, you, you do whatever you feel is best for you.
Yeah, we can't do anything like that.
But I, he, I, I think he's agreeable to help you out with the thing. I just, my own feeling, and I don't know, I haven't talked to him any more than you have tonight.
Okay, well, I mean, it's four o'clock in the morning, I mean.
Well, that's another issue altogether, because in that particular case.
It's the noise or what?
Well, if, if it's noise, that's the health department, probably the building and so forth. I mean, obviously, most businesses can't stop before a certain time, and I understand, you know, I have trucks myself, I have had trucks over in the past, and, but we don't usually stop till seven in the morning, but I understand what you're saying. Once in a while, for some unknown reason, some trucks gotta leave at twelve o'clock at night or one o'clock, and it happens very, very rarely, but it, it, I know, I know what you're saying, and it, it pisses up your sleep and so forth, and there are rules and regulations on that. I, I think if you talk with him one-to-one basis or two of you together, or, you know, and face-to-face is a heck of a lot better than getting lawyers involved and everything else. If it's agreeable to you and to him, I think he's ready to work with you on it. That's, that's my own personal opinion. If you don't happy with that, then the building department's a place to come. Thank you. What, Mr. McKinnon, I just, you've heard a lot, and I think you're happy to talk with him.
Yes, I'm willing to, I'm willing to talk there and help her out, which, however, exactly, and far as, starting trucks up in the morning, we, I, we start the trucks up in the morning, I leave sometimes at five o'clock, five thirty in the morning out front, I park my trunk out front, but nobody starts their trucks out back. There is a dumpster guy that's been doing out there in the morning, and I told him, I says, I don't want anybody out back there until seven o'clock, and that's, that's the rule, and I know she's got a thing about that out back, and other than that, that's the only truck that's out there that goes there, but I, I'm trying to help you out as best as I can, I honestly mean that. I, I will, I, I'm glad I met you, I know you, and I, I'll come over and visit you, and, you know, if you want, I can put a couple of trees out back, up there to, to do something. I'm willing to work with you.
Okay, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, thank you. On the, what's motion for the board? I mean, they didn't bring over two hundred and fifty yards, and if, if we wanted to leave the, the surveyor, and.
I mean, I endorse this plan that they're presenting, I mean, this is the proper solution to all this.
Do you want to just approve the plan?
So, if you want to.
I'll make a motion to approve the plans in a minute.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, some will, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry I had to wait so long.
Well, if we're gonna have marijuana, I guess so.
Learn more about marijuana than you're ever gonna need to know, right?
This is a continuation of the.
Um, no, it's a.
Public hearing notice, the Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one, at six forty P M. At Abington Town Hall, five hundred Glenwood Way, Abington, Mass., on the application of Robert Sullivan, five seventy Adam Street, Milton, Mass., zero two one eight six, for approval to allow fill material to be brought to the site of six sixty-two Adam Street, Abington, Mass., zero two three five one, pursuant to Abington General Bylaw, Section forty-nine dash one. The property is located at six six two Adam Street, Abington, Mass., zero two three five one, as shown on Assessors map sixty-five, lots eighty-one. The application will be on file at the town clerk's office during regular business hours. Wayne P. Smith, Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board. My name is Ronald Whitney, I'm here on behalf of Robert and Jane Sullivan, and through the process of attrition, we whittled down the crowd, such that there is nobody here that expresses an interest in this petition, in this application. The application was actually filed September third, twenty twenty. That's where the stamp is, right there, from the town clerk. And, and as the board.
It was an incomplete application, let's just be clear about that. You literally handed me a piece of paper.
Yep, yep.
It didn't, it didn't require, it didn't give me the plans or any of the other things that are required in a fill application.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want, I don't want them to think they got an application on September third that they never saw.
Yep.
That I was hiding it away.
No, the suggestion was not that.
Okay.
The suggestion merely was that it had been filed way back when, just past the one year anniversary, and now we are here on it tonight, and there has been a more complete filing made. And honestly, I didn't give it much thought over the past twelve months because we've been talking ad nauseam about this project and what was going on at six sixty-two and six fifty-two, and the McKinnick, McKinnon property. And so, we seem to have, excuse me if I will, kind of beaten the pulp out of this plot plan, this site plan, and it was approved with numerous conditions, and the Kearneys appealed it to the land court where it now sits, and we're due to have a mediation session with the Kearneys on Thursday morning at the land court. And so, to give you a little bit of do, I heard the discussion here with the McKinnon folks, and so, there was some fill that was moved from Mr. Sullivan's lot, and Mr. Kearney's lot, to the McKinnon's lot. Everybody was working together, it was harmonious, and things were good. And then, when there was a falling out somehow between the Kearneys and Mr. Sullivan, everything kind of hit the fan. But to give you some numbers, eleven hundred and thirteen cubic yards were taken off of Mr. Sullivan's property. Now, you heard Kyle Gavi suggest that one hundred and seventy-four cubic yards were placed on that berm, and that differs a little bit from what our engineer Sean Harty had to say, because he was talking about it being perhaps as many as three hundred and eighty-three cubic yards. The difference being that apparently, there is a, a difference between the engineers, and I think listening to Kyle, whom I know and respect, and talking to him outside, there was an existing berm there, and some of the fill from the Kearney and the Sullivan lots got put on top of it, that's what these folks were all talking about. So, approximately a hundred and seventy-four yards went over on top of that burn, which is largely on McKinnon's lot, and eleven hundred and thirteen went out, five seventy-one came in to the Sullivan property. So, what you have at the end of the day is three hundred and sixty-eight less cubic yards of material on the Sullivan lot. And the, I, I put the truck routes up and down Route fifty-eight, Mr. Sullivan used C, MC contractors up there, kind of a paving outfit from Whitman, they came up Route fifty-eight to get to the site. He used T L Edwards and another firm for trucking the material in, that came largely from north to south, and as far as we know, as far as we know, standing here today, there, there weren't complaints about dust, there weren't complaints about erosion. Still today, I asked Mr. Sullivan, what's the condition of the lot after you have a torrential downpour like it hit last Friday night? And he said that, a Thursday night perhaps, he said that, nothing, there's no standing water, some of the water did run out onto the street where the drainage is, but he hasn't been able to do any work. You recall the site plan, that he had, had an extensive underground chamber that was required to be installed, he hasn't done that yet, but the material that was brought in, I provided a Briggs engineering report that tells you what the fill is, and basically, it's just crushed material. There might be some paving in it, there might be some stones in it, might be some concrete in it, and it's used for laying the foundation for paving. And it's strong, steady material that is good for parking vehicles on, and that's why he put it there, so. It's there. He put the stuff in before he came to your board, that was backwards, we acknowledge that, but the material's there. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, as would Mr. Sullivan.
Any questions, board?
Where did, is it in here, where the material came from?
Where it came from?
Yeah, the.
T L Edwards, is that correct?
It was Montville and.
Jacobs?
Over there on that track.
Okay. So, they removed eleven hundred cubic yards, and I don't know, three eighty-three stayed on the site, between the sites.
McKinnon.
Where'd the other seven thirty go?
Uh, where did the seven thirty go?
Yeah.
They removed eleven, eleven thirteen.
Yeah.
Okay. When I say, I should say they moved eleven hundred and thirteen.
Okay.
Three hundred and seventy-four stayed on site. That gets you down to somewhere around seven fifty.
Yeah.
And they brought in five hundred and seventy-one. So, they took out seven fifty, they brought in five seventy-one.
Right, I'm curious where that seven fifty went.
So, you can answer your question, if you don't know, I didn't, you know, I wasn't party to, let's say, great to the grid, so, I gave the task, please do it, it was on.
Okay. Do we have requirements and people take out fill?
As far as, I, I always thought we did, but we have another situation, we do, though, is it's taking fill out of, out of town and putting it in, it's both on our.
It's an excavation permit.
Oh, that's, so that's different.
Yeah.
And that goes before the selectmen?
It goes to the selectmen with a referral to the planning board for a technical site plan review.
So.
Since that's never happened.
One, one thing we ran into some time ago was a person removed fill, rocks, et cetera, from his property, and because it was seller excavation, did not come under our situation.
And it flooded another neighbor's basement, I think, I think I remember the project off Lincoln.
off Lincoln.
Yes, I...
And so, part of this is that it's gonna cooperate with Mr. McKinnon to tamp it all down and put the wood chips on it and make it look all pretty, and that's...
I don't know, have you talked to this?
But I mean, part of this is on his property as well.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, I mean, I'll get the wood chips for Mr. McKinnon, that's not a problem.
I just didn't want it to be, you know, half of it is tamped down the landscape and trees, and the other half is...
No, no, it won't be upstairs.
Okay.
I think in our plan, it had to be, I think it was, seated, but I don't have a problem.
That's what the site plan, it's forward, hopefully.
Okay.
I would suggest we then, we then through the site plan, hopefully, hopefully it continues forward and the site plan gets complete. We've been able to listen, able to listen.
This plan should never have been approved. I have no idea, we'll get you guys, listen to the last meeting, unfortunately I wasn't here, I have no idea how it got approved. I thought for sure it was a no-brainer that it wouldn't get approved, there's no 20-foot setback, property's residentially used.
Well, that really has something to do with what we're talking about right now.
No, as far as I'm concerned, it's a non-project, I'm not gonna vote, so.
Does someone wanna make a motion?
What would the motion be?
The motion would be to approve the existing conditions as they are now, and approve the fact that they brought the fill in.
What's that motion?
Seconded.
Message is to recall that all the conditions was that the area be big, so this fill is a good foundation for that pavement, I always wanted good conditions.
There's a lot more work that's eventually gonna go on there.
Exactly.
Right, which is on the site plan that we approved.
That's correct.
This is basically just to close this whole thing.
Right.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Public hearing, violation favored to file permit on application 652 Adams Street, and Liz?
So, while I was away on vacation, I had a couple of emails from Mr. Kearney, and apparently, he had a conversation with the town manager that he wants to file for a excavation permit, I believe is, I believe it's an excavation permit. I don't have all the details ahead of me, because I literally had a 10-minute conversation this morning about it. He is coming in to talk to the town manager tomorrow, because an excavation permit does require a technical site plan review by the planning board. So, all I can tell you is he wanted to be removed from the agenda, and I explained to him that I could not remove somebody from the agenda when a butters had been notified.
I guess my problem was, and I thought it was very well explained to him that he need to, some sort of a plan with before and after conditions.
He's claiming he doesn't, that he, that no fill went on to his property. I have not seen a plan, I still don't have a plan, so I have nothing to give to you guys.
I get that, but...
Right.
I get that.
The other thing is, he wants to file with the, with the selectmen, because he claims that the selectmen should do this, but if he does that, he's gonna have to pay for...
Part of that bylaw is, part of that bylaw is a technical review by the planning board, so he would have to file for site plan review with the planning board.
And again, he needs to comply with what we talked about, with, with conditions and other things.
Right, he's, well, he's saying that, that should've, sort of shouldn't apply to him, I think is what he was trying to say, is because he didn't have fill brought on to his property, he had material removed. So, instead of having a fill permit...
As soon as he files site plan, could be looking for the same thing.
I, right, well, the site plan comes to the planning board.
I mean, even fill out a fill permit, just put zeros across the board, because there's no fill.
You were looking, I thought we were looking for something that, like, showed to me, yeah, so I can see it.
Right, right. I don't know what to tell you, other than I received multiple emails asking for him to be removed, and that he was filing an excavation permit with the town manager.
So, he can work it out tomorrow, whenever he sees a town manager, but in the meantime, he's got a problem with the planning board. So...
I don't know what you guys wanna do, I don't know if you wanna continue this till October, where I might have more information.
I suggest somebody, like, conversation with the town manager.
There's gonna be a conversation tomorrow.
Maybe the chairman.
What do you want me to tell him tomorrow, that you, the board is looking for him to show what happened to the fill that left, what the conditions were before the fill left, right?
Yes, and what the conditions are now.
They're gonna ask for the same thing, if he's got to do a site plan or a fill permit, technically, we're still looking for the same thing. And it shouldn't be all, I'm assuming it shouldn't be all that difficult.
I guess motion to continue?
Motion to continue until October 4th.
Until our October 4th meeting?
Yes. Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
710 hearing, 207 Bedford Street site plan continued from June 2021. Letter received requesting continuance to October 2021.
I'm not sure if you all got that, I think it's from there, they have retained counsel, Commerford and Sullivan, who we have worked with, the board has worked with in the past.
Is that one from a couple of months ago?
That's, that's the...
This was that eight unit, was it eight or 11 units? 11 units on the corner of Bedford Street.
With respect to the above referenced matters, please let this letter confirm that our office can sense to the continuance of the public hearing and special permit hearing through October 31, 2021. Should you have any questions?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. So move.
That technical will be on the to our next meeting, right?
Yes. Well, actually, I'll leave it there.
I do bill and suspend us in case something happens, if they put like the 4th, and then we can't meet the 4th.
We used to try to extend it seven days past, it's not that happened, but...
So, I, they were non-responsive to several requests, they missed the filing deadline, I emailed them, and like, a week later, or whatever, I got something back.
207?
Yeah, so, in the meantime, they then retained counsel, who reached out, and I said, they need to figure out what they're doing, and pretty quick, so.
Yeah, that's...
Any comments on the zoning board of appeals agenda?
I saw the August 5th one, do we have it in September?
Actually, it's already happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already happened.
But you have it.
Who are the new members? Who's actually on the board now?
Um, so, I don't wanna get them wrong, I think David Commerford is one, and Andy Burbine is still on.
And they put the fellow that they took off, and they had to sort of make him a full, he's an alternate.
He's an alternate, Mr. Nigrelli's an alternate.
Yeah, and I thought Mr. Leverott was an alternate too, but he went on...
Finance committee.
Finance committee, yeah.
I like how they got trained...
Which actually is a good place.
I like how they got trained in the 40B, and Mrs. Howe, who attended the housing committee meetings all day, is on board.
Right, she just got appointed, yeah.
I resigned from that.
I think we discussed this at our last meeting, just sending a quick note to zoning board and conservation about, was it 380 Brock Nav, just to let them know where it stands with us?
Yep, yep, they have a new person who started last week.
They, meaning?
The office, so zoning and conservation is transitioning to the new person, it's a lot of stuff, so, but I will email her to let her know everything on our agenda and where it all stands.
Thank you.
Not the, not the, not the fill stuff, because nobody's going there, but for everybody else, I'll let them know.
Did I miss Dale Street, or did they hold off?
Dale Street, we continued, because their engineer emailed me, they don't have, they haven't finished with conservation yet, and I think you all got an email from Doug Elwick.
Was he attended? Can you?
I was on the forum, eh?
Can you forward me the stuff in town council, or for some reason I missed it?
On?
That Dale Street?
Dale Street, yeah.
I got it.
Where's in my papers here, I've lost my...
Basically, parking up a lot of trees.
Is it on the...
Trying to address things that, like, has been processed before.
Yeah, just give us the...
On Dale Street.
On Dale Street? Proceed?
No, no, back.
The other thing we didn't discuss is the 40 yard dense residential mixed-use projects that we can put off on the next meeting.
Have this, Bruce? Have you given this to me?
Yeah, I have, I have.
Bruce did have OCPC make a map of other communities who have adopted the legislation, I do have that in my office, and I can bring that to the next meeting. It's, it's my understanding, the owners of Zero Summit Street, which was sort of the arrow driving this, are gonna move forward with their affordable housing plan. I think they're gonna relook at stuff, but I probably gotta move forward that. They may ask to come back to the planning board and ask the town to waive the ZBI requirement, so you can't do those things simultaneously, so if you come back to the planning board, you'd have to wait a year to go back to the 40B zoning board of appeals, but they might ask to waive that. I don't know who would grant that, probably the zoning board.
So, they'd rather have the permit through us than through the ZBI?
That's, I guess, one of their ideas.
Because they can choose, right?
They can, yeah.
I just wanted to bring up, Bull Colling Planning Council now has a drone, and for photography and stuff like that, and they have three qualified drone pilots, Sean Bailey, Andrew Vidal, who's a GIS guy, and Kyle Noah, and that could be useful to us if we wanted to get some pictures of view, you know, an aerial view of stuff. So, again, the contact people would probably be Charlie Kilmer, transportation.
Bruce, you're...
So, Bruce, if you hear something over your house, just ignore it.
Bruce, do you know if the state has released their guidelines regarding the new rules around transit stations?
They haven't.
No, I haven't.
They haven't.
So, you can't do anything until that happens, right?
No. Well, I mean, I guess that's up to you guys, if you wanna go with what exists now as 40-yard zoning, or if you wanna wait, as they're sort of really trying to push that to the towns, the communities that have a train station.
I mean, my two questions are, what's the minimum size of the district you have to have?
Right.
Can it just be a block, or does it have to be a minimum of four acres or whatever?
Right.
And then, is there a minimum density requirement?
And I, I think all of that is gonna be, but I mean, we just don't have those answers right now.
No, I would love to have it in the year, but we don't.
Is there anything else to be brought before the meeting? Motion to adjourn will be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Thank you, everyone, for watching.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
It's up.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, you're mumbling over there, I don't know, it happens, my hearing looks bad. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Aye.